All right, we just have to wait for the live stream to start, just a moment. We just have to wait for the live stream to start, just a moment. All right, you should be good to go.
All right, everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll open the meeting of Free Town Board of Selectmen for April 6th, 2020. And welcome the guests that we have with us tonight also. First order of business would be reorganization of the board.
Charlie, would you mind to hold that at the end of the meetings? This is your meeting, so I don't mind holding that till the end.
Okay, all right, fine. The next item will be weekly warrants for April, our number 041 through 044.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number three is building insurance for the regional school district in relation to the Free Town Elementary School. I see that Ashley is here, at least not. So David, if I'll turn that just over so you can give the rundown.
All right, Rick is also here, just to let you know that. The situation about a couple of months ago developed where Ashley had informed me that there was a duplicity in coverage between the town and between the regional school, both ensuring the Free Town Elementary School. The duplicity is not needed. Under the contract, the Free Town Elementary School is required to provide that, the building insurance, and they do have that coverage. They have a policy which covers a blanket of up to $117 million. Then the property coverage for the school at the present time is $18,131,707. At the same time, we were covering it as part of our policy at $19,968,172, out of our total blanket, which was $25,577,907. We didn't, we don't have any contents coverage, which is personal property. The, the issue is that there's no need for both of the entities to cover the insurance. The school can, the regional school can cover the insurance and then not. I guess there's a provision where they had to pay us $25,000. We would then waive that provision, but we would also go back to our carrier and remove that coverage from our existing policy, which would substantially reduce our premium. I just want to point out also that, that the, both of the values on the elementary school may be on the low side, given the full replacement cost in the event of a catastrophic loss, like a tornado or something that would completely take the building down. And in our case, if they took the building down in three or four other buildings, like the Council on Aging and the new police station, we wouldn't have enough coverage to cover that. The school coverage is the replacement cost, it is at 100%. So the coverage that they're currently carrying is more than sufficient, but by the same token, like I said, I think that we, we should be taking a look at it, getting a true assessment of the value of that property. I don't know if Ashley wants to add anything to that, or?
I do, we've already taken those steps. So once we left our meeting back in March, Brian went and appraised the building and we upped the coverage from the 19 or the 18 million. Now, sorry, I'm looking at my other screen, but now we're up to 22 million, $226 per square foot, and our blanket has gone up to 123 million. So those changes have already been made.
Yeah, and we actually had a provision in there that was on the general liability. It should have been higher and you guys already corrected that also.
We did, it's up to, yeah, it's correct now.
Yeah, the, the other thing to note here also is that both of us, both the school and the town, had both of their insurance consultants review the situation and both consultants basically recommended the same thing. So at this point, you know, I would recommend to the board that the school provide its own coverage on the building, that we waived that $25,000 fee and that we apply for credit on our existing insurance policy for the, the school building portion of that policy.
All right, do I hear any questions or discussion?
Just have a question, Ashley or Rick, is Lakeville doing the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve as recommended by the town administrator.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, if I may ask Ashley to just stand by, I do have a couple of questions on one of the warrant articles and maybe it would be good if you could stand by and you could cut down at a later date. It's in relation to your warrant article that the school department has. Is that all right, Ashley?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. The next item on the agenda is the issue with Old Colony and their most recent letter to the board or they, they had a letter to the board about admissions for this year. I'll open this up for any discussion.
I have a question first, is Lakeville in the same position as we are, or are they members?
They're the members.
I get to speak today, David's correct, no, Lakeville's not in the same circumstance because they are members.
That complicates things.
The situation is this, there, they, I think if you look at their website and you take a look at, you know, their intent as part of their master plan, it was always to have Free Town as part of the membership of the, the school district. There have been rumors, I'm not sure, you know, if they're substantiated, but there is rumors that they're going to expand their building and that Free Town was going to play a role in becoming a member and as a result, taking on part of the debt that would be assessed as a result of that renovation. It also is understood or believed that the demographics by adding Free Town to that mix would also be beneficial to the school, the Old Colony School District by virtue of the demographics and would result in a better percentage of reimbursement from the SBAB, which is the School Building Assistance Bureau. There have been over the years, I guess it was an effort back in the 1970s and in the 1990s to have the town of Free Town join the regional school district. I guess in both of those instances, that it was not approved. There have been informal discussions. In fact, George and I went to a meeting in March prior to George becoming a member of the board, but he was the only member running at that point. So there was an assumption made that he would obviously be a selectman. And during that discussion, we, we talked specifically about the SPED issue and because that was an outstanding issue. We were invited there strictly as a visit to see their operations. Where I, at least I was, and I believe George was, there was no, you know, other motive than to see what they do and to see the school. I hadn't up to that point been there. It was made mention that they had some interest in having us join. That was relayed to the board, I believe in my report or informally. That was the extent of the discussions, it weren't really. And periodically, you know, over the course of the discussion about the SPED issue, you know, that, I, I guess the bottom line here is that if there truly was an interest on the part of Old Colony to have us join the regional school district, I would have thought that the school committee, acting through the superintendent or the superintendent acting through the school committee, would have formalized that in a letter to the Board of Selectmen to begin a negotiation process to do that. That did not happen. And secondly, if the intent was always to have to not allow the freshman class attend the Old Colony Vocational School in the fall, I would think that they would have given some kind of notice so that at least we could have had a discussion about that prior to that decision, decision being made. And I guess the other question is, when and how was that decision made? And was it at a meeting? And should we request a copy of those meeting minutes to find out how this whole thing basically unfolded? At this point, they are willing to talk. The superintendent did express an interest in, you know, meeting with the board. I think at this point, that would be prudent so that we can get everything on the table and find out specifically, how do we get, you know, our students back into the school? It's important to note that 20% of their kids are Free Town students and that's a pretty substantial number to them economically. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's really kind of a shame that this whole thing went down the way that it did. But I think that at this point, there may be an opportunity to meet and talk and find out what the plan is for those people or those students that were not admitted. I think, I think it's pretty, you know, critical that, you know, these kids who place their hopes, their dreams in, you know, going to vocational school and having the opportunity to get a vocational education now have, have been thwarted by a decision that came out of the blue. So, you know, my recommendation would be to the board that we meet with the Old Colony representatives and, and find out what we need to do to get, you know, our, our kids into their school.
David, one question. You, you implied in what you just said that Old Colony made the decision not to accept our students. Is that what happened? Or is it that they had a full complement of students from their member towns?
I can't answer that question because I don't know the inner workings of the school, number one. Number two, they've always made a provision for Free Town kids. And this year, you know, did they get so many students from, that were member students that they decided not to admit? And if they knew that, I guess, why didn't they communicate that to the Board of Selectmen and say, hey, we got a situation here, we're only going to take members, children, and, you, you know, at least not go through the process. There has to have been a decision at some point by somebody to say, we're not going to take Free Town students.
Just a couple of things to add into that, because I was on two subcommittees to look into joining Old Colony. Each member town has to go to their own town meeting and give up seats. So A, you got to keep that in mind, is anybody going to be willing to give up seats to the town of Free Town? The second thing is, is that back then, it was a million dollars upfront to join. So I'm sure it's not a million anymore, I'm sure it's probably a little more than that. Now, would they consider a payment plan? Not really sure, I don't know. And the thing to consider is, um, that as not being a member town, we are not, um, we don't have to pay any of the capital costs for the projects. And I think that that's the whole underlying issue here is that they're going to build an addition and they need the town of Free Town's money in order to pay for part of that addition.
I, I agree 100% what you just said. In a way, I, I'm concerned because if we move on, I'm not saying we're even talking about that, but if we decide, all right, then, because if they keep doing this, at some point, there'll be no Free Town kids there and they'll have to make up that 20%. And if the plan that they're proposing to renovate their school includes Free Town, you, you wiped out 20% of your student population. And I'm sure that that renovation plan includes a plan to have more students attend. So as a result of, you know, eliminating Free Town, you really kind of put yourself in a box. But not only are you not getting Free Town students, but you've got to make up the 20% of the, the students that you no longer have. So, you know, I think this is all, these are all things that need to be discussed between the parties and you're entirely right about the debt. I think that that's part of, that's a big part of the issue is that they're looking for us to, if we want to continue to send our students there, they're looking for us to help them build a new building or renovate their existing building, I should say.
All right, if I may suggest, we don't know, you know, we really have no understanding about what is their potential motive here. We, we can make some summations from the information that we have. You know, I know, I, I've gone on their website, I've seen their 2017 through 2019 improvement plan in it. They state that they wanted to look into the feasibility in of Free Town joining. You know, it, to, to have any idea other than trying to get some information on what has transpired, why it's transpired and how do we move forward as a town and do we join the district or not? I, I think that's what we have to do. So I would like to see us get a line of communication, which unfortunately, I don't think has been propagated by the Old Colony District with us at all. And I like to get a line of communication and see where we, where we go. But I, I think we need to have some facts. We don't have any facts. We don't actually even know if they are not going to allow any Free Town students in. One of the things I think is kind of strange is they had all these Free Town students go through the application process and then they denied them. And so I like to get a, a little bit of an understanding from them. So I would like to see us send a communication, whether it's email, formal letter, telephone, however anyone wants to, oh, frame it. But that we set up, we try to set up a line of communications with the Old Colony School Committee and see, you know, where do we stand with them?
Charlie, if I, Charlie, if I may, Rick Medeas?
Yes, sorry, Rick, I didn't see you there earlier.
No, no problem, if I, if I may. Do you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, so my only, my only concern, obviously, I, I don't represent Old Colony or the superintendent. And I don't necessarily disagree with anything that anyone has shared here, including Charlie, your action of bringing them together. My only concern right now is this one-year transition where it appears our current freshman class have not, are on waiting list there and the timeliness of that, you know, that notice, meaning if, if you don't pull together and get Old Colony to, to, to sit with down with Free Town in a short timeframe, the current freshman in class.
Oh, we lost you, Rick. Oh, we lost, I don't know, maybe everybody else is hearing.
No, I can't hear him.
All right. No, I can't hear him either.
Rick?
Well, try to expedite that as best we can.
Rick, you cut out halfway through, sorry.
No, no problem, how about now? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I just was asking that, that, and I think you guys have that on, on the agenda to, to expedite it. I just am a little worried about the concern where in April and May and for these kids to get, be enrolled even as non-members for one year might be something that could be agreed upon. So that would be my only request and I certainly could be present for any session. I don't control that piece, but I certainly think this one class, whether even if you become members, may take some time and I would just hate to see this one class lose out. So that would be my only request, that that be potentially expedited with the superintendent of Old Colony to try to be sure that some of those kids that are currently on the waiting list as freshmen potentially will be accepted.
Would you want to do that as a conference call, me, you and him? Or would that be, or do you want to stay out of it, I guess?
Well, no, I mean, I, I, there are, there are kids. So I certainly, I, I, you know, I, I certainly think I'd like to keep that opportunity open. I know that we're, you know, Free Town's non-member. David, you certainly can include me in any conversation in relation to the, to where those kids end up.
All right, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think that's well taken. I mean, unfortunately, as we all know, and Rick, I know you know, you know, we've been put under the gun. We've all entered this basically maybe a week or so ago. So, um, any other questions or discussion from the members of the board?
Well, I will, I'll be in touch with them tomorrow. I'll, I'll put a letter together and I'll also put a call in.
And David, you just include me in, on that piece and I appreciate it, thanks.
I will do that.
Charlie, I'm going to probably shut myself, I'm not sure there are the school-related topics at this point.
Well, the, the only other thing that I would kind of jump to is your article that you have on the town warrant in relation to, oh, me internet. I, I have a few questions, I don't know if anybody else has one. So if everyone doesn't mind, I would go to review the next item, which is a review of the 2020 Annual and Potential Special Town Meeting oh, warrant and discussion and approval of that warrant. And if we could, since, so we could expedite things for Rick and Ashley, if we could go to oh, article number?
16.
16, okay, thank you. Which is a request for $85,335.35 for the cost of a internet infrastructure for the, oh, school department. Rick and Ashley?
Yes.
I get, my first and foremost question is, why is this a warrant article? It's, it's been in the past that everything that the school district has asked for has come through their budget. So that would be my first question, if, if I may.
Ashley, do you want to respond to that first?
This is a one-time capital project, so it's not going to be reoccurring. We put it through as a separate article, so we didn't overinflate the FY21 general fund budget. This is the warrant article that we've been talking about, the regional fincom. It is also, can be used, E-rate can be used to offset the cost. So right now, it's for $200,000 and the $85,000 is your portion of it, Free Town's portion. And again, that's one-time funds for FY21, that wouldn't be reoccurring.
Okay, you got me on my second question, which was, how is the breakdown? Thank you very much, Ash.
No, no problem. And this cost will change, we just, I'll, I'll update it once I have more information. We put it out to bid and those bids came in on Friday. So our technology department is going through them right now to decide which one is the best fit for what we want to do going forward.
I have a question, have you spoken to Lakeville and what are they doing with their warrant article?
Sure, so we have not had the same conversation yet with Lakeville, but we, we submitted the same exact warrant article to them with their allocation of the $200,000.
Okay, thank you.
Judge, do you have any questions?
No.
All right, with that, so we can get back to some continuity. If no one else has anything, I'll thank Ashley and Rick and they can be on their way for the rest of the evening and we can get on with our board. Anyone else?
Thank you folks, David will be in touch.
Bye, guys, bye.
Yeah. All right, I'll start the rundown of the warrant. Does anyone have, should I run it down item by item? Or should I just ask people if they have a question? Which way do you want to do it?
I, I would go through the articles and then vote at the end, unless we ever hold on an article.
All right. Hey, I'll start, article number one is the budget, which of course is, you know, in flex and would be for, and it's an item for its own meetings and so forth. So I'll skip that unless there's an issue. All right. Article number two is the salaries of elected officials. Any input, any statements on that?
I think we need to see where we're going to be, um, and then go from there. Because they've also put it into their own budgets anyway. So whatever we vote on for their budget from article one, it would have to be in article two.
All right. So am I to understand from you too that you don't have any issues right now with the salaries? But we want to come back to that, is that what I'm reading?
Are the salaries going to stay as they are now?
Well, the elected officials we're talking about.
Right.
General, I believe that would be the case. There are two that are, you know, larger salaries in relation to the town clerk and the highway surveyor. I would assume that we might want to come back and talk about that over other, other elected officials. All right. Article number four has to do with a special request for some, for some of money for tree work. And I remember the discussions saying there's a large, a very large tree that needs repol. I don't have, I don't think we have a cost on that as of yet. And so any discussion on that?
No, I did, we just need to have the dollar amount at some point.
You, you want to have also the, a description of where the tree is so that it's, it ties it down to a specific location and?
Right, I think we want exactly a significant editing in that. But first of all, I think one of the things is the cost and what's the situation with it. Article number five is assessors. They, the assessors have issued, well, have requested that we accept a chapter and section from Massachusetts General Law, which allows for a 10% increase for assessing employees that are certified.
My only question to that would be the assistant assessor and would that be part of the collective bargaining? Because that, that's something different. So that would be my question about that article.
Okay, Judge, do you have any discussion?
No, are we reorganizing the assessive office?
I believe.
Part of the, the budget discussion. So do you want to wait till then or?
Yes, exactly.
All right, article number six is relation to veterans' graves and the maintenance of them on a yearly basis and the sum that they request was $500.
Fine.
Sorry.
Article number seven is the domestic violence abuse program put on by the Women's Center of New Bedford. It's a article that has been on annually for some time and they request $2,000.
That's good.
The next is grave marker repair. The cemetery commission is asked for, oh, a sum of $2,500 for a grave marker. for grave marker repair in cemeteries that we do not have a potential air fund in. So basically, my read on this is older cemeteries, such as family cemeteries, that type of thing. What is anyone's pleasure?
That's, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just gonna mark, I don't know, you know, in these times if that, I, I realize that some, at this point, seems kind of trivial, but I do want to have a little bit more of a, maybe discussion on this at a later time. But generally, I, generally, I don't have a problem about it. It's just that, you know, where are we budgetarily in the future here?
With any of these articles, the same thing, like, we're gonna have to look at this and say, do we have the money? Or don't we have the money at some point? And, you know, it may not be twenty-five hundred, it may just be five hundred. Who knows at this point?
Okay. It's important to remember that we're not finalizing the warrant right now.
Okay.
We're just reviewing it.
Okay. And transfer of thirty-five hundred dollars from the sale of the fund relating to the sale of lots in the town cemeteries to the maintenance of lots.
Fine with me.
Okay. All right, number ten, six thousand dollars for a large format clock the year scanner for the health and building department. The discussion on that?
Yeah, no.
Now I'd have to get more detail on that.
Okay. All right. The next is article eleven, sixty-eight hundred dollars for the update on the OPEB study, which is two years old. This was presented by the treasurer. I, from the understanding I have is that this would be to update the study as we go forward with trying to fund that. Any discussion?
Yeah, can this wait another year?
I, you know, yeah, I don't know.
Can I chime in? Uh, no, it can't. It's required to be done every other year. So it can hold off and not necessarily be done prior to a fall town meeting, but it does need to be done next year.
This is the basis by which we establish what our financial obligations are going to be going into the future. It's an actuarial study that looks at where we are and where we gotta be.
All right. Thank you, Kim, for that information. Article twelve, transfer twenty-three thousand dollars to the budget account from the PEG access and cable related fund. In other words, we're, we're going to take twenty-three thousand dollars from this fund, which accumulates relation to the cable contract, and actually put it into the budget to pay for, basically for filming that we do. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay, article thirteen would be to appropriate thirty thousand dollars for a mini excavator for the highway department.
Well, it was submitted by petition, so we can't get rid of it.
Right. And the, the same for article fourteen, for three, thirty thousand dollars for a new or used bucket truck.
By petition also?
Yeah.
Okay. Article fifteen is to appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars to pave a portion of, of Copacoot Road, which is now, basically would be from the intersection of High Street to the end of residents on Copacoot Road.
Nope.
How much?
Seventy-five thousand.
Wow.
Yeah, no.
Just so, George, I don't know if you know, this has been on for at least three or four years now. The reason it would be raised and appropriated from town funds and not potentially chapter ninety is because if they did it with chapter ninety funds, they would have to widen the road. At, at present, there is, oh, pavement chippings laid on the road several times a year. As we were speaking last, we had the meeting, I was talking about the highway department, vehicles going by the house at that time, what that was, what they were doing the other day when we had the other meeting, just so you know.
How many homes are on this street? Or businesses, whatever.
I believe that it's kind of, it's at least three, possibly four residences. I do point out that they built their homes knowing that this was on a dirt road at the time. So I, I, I'm not, I'm a little skeptical of doing it. Myself.
To go back, can I go back one article? The article from the highway, is it from the highway department for the bucket loader?
No, for the employees.
It's, it's not a bucket loader, George. It's a bucket truck, an aerial.
The question I have, Charlie, is this was submitted by petition. And is the department or the employees petitioning for equipment?
I, I haven't seen the petition names on it, but my.
It was primarily signed by the employees, but they're mostly town employees, so they got a few, sorry, they're mostly town residents. So they got a few extra signatures they needed, and they were mostly home.
How many, how many signatures do they have to get for the annual?
Ten.
Ten, yeah, so it's not hard to do.
And I believe they have four or five residents just in the highway department themselves.
I mean, I, I kind of, I, I have a real question on the bucket truck. George, I agree with you. But as we say, we'll have to fight that out, basically, I guess, on a town meeting floor. Anything else? I'll go to, I'll go to sixteen now, which we have already spoken with Ashley and Rick about. And it's the sum of eighty-five thousand, three hundred dollars and thirty-five cents for an upgrade in the network infrastructure for the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District.
I think we need to talk to Lakeville and see what they're doing with this. Because if one town passes it and the other one doesn't, or if one pulls it, either we're both gonna pull it, or we're both gonna leave it on and see where the chips fall.
All right. Article seventeen would be to transfer from stabilization, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a study for design and construction or a renovation of the seniors center.
The study would be how much?
Well, it's to study, it's for a study and design, so five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's just for the study?
That would be, i- in reality, that would be.
Construction and renovation, expansion.
Oh, okay, that's for the total, total project. Is that what we're saying?
No, not at all. What the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be, would be to, to do a, basically an audit of what would be needed for the building, or if they came up with a renovation, a design, not a design for the renovation, but the, oh, basically, the owner, project owner, help me here now, a project owner consultant, that. Yeah, right, yes.
The article does say construction.
Yeah.
Renovation and expansion.
May I? When, remember when they came in, they thought, they wanted to put this forward, and we had this long discussion that they're under the impression that the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be enough to get somebody to come in, design it and construct it. And, you know, back then, I said, or I, in my, in my view, it's nearly not enough money, but this is submitted by petition. And right now, I also said that we should wait till the fall, and that's still how I feel. Because, guys, we really do not know where we're going with these budgets, and we need to tread very lightly.
Right. I personally, that, to where, where we are right now. I mean, things might change in six months, eight months, who knows? But I think we, we need to husband all the available cash that we have and that is to go forward with this article in the foreseeable future is, is not gonna be in the best interest of the town at all. Seniors or anyone else?
I, I mean, I really would like them to appropriate just enough money to do the study so that we can get a number of what it would really cost to do the renovation that they want. I mean, that would make most sense to me. I, I think we should sit down with them and see if they would rewrite this particular article.
Well, to be perfectly, I, I understand your point, George. My point still is, I think we need to save this, this money.
I, I agree with that, Charlie. I really do.
Possibly, yo, possibly in the next few years, you know, yes. But as to, you know, July first, definitely not. But that's, that's my, my view.
Well, Lisa, do you know how much it would cost for us to get out, the, the people who are doing the police station?
Yeah, so, um, for them to, I did talk to Taylor one time about this after our meeting that we had. And Taylor said, I said, if we did like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, would that get us the project manager, the design, the construction company? And would that move us forward? And he said, yes, absolutely. And they would be able to do something from there. But you, you know, you have to have a project manager, and that five hundred and fifty thousand dollars right there doesn't even consider a project manager. The way buildings are built now is so different than when that building was first built. Yes, you could have somebody come in off the street and do it. But because the guidelines and, and the laws have changed so significantly, that's why you need a project manager to ensure that the money spent from taxpayers is done in the right way and appropriately, and considering all, all things, electric, cable, you know, wifi, all of that stuff. That all needs to be, you know, designed and done the right way. So that five fifty is not gonna cut it. And I'll dig up the email that I got from him, and I, I can get you a better number. But I'm.
The, the other thing is, is when you do any kind of renovation to the building over a certain threat percentage or dollar threshold, it requires you to bring the building a hundred percent up to ADA standards, which means, in this case, an elevator, handicap bathrooms, retrofitting every doorknob, every switch, every, all the way down the line. So there's gonna be an additional cost on top of the existing cost of whatever addition is added on to that building.
Well, that's the whole point, David. We, there's a lot of unknowns here. And, you know, to be perfectly frank here, I mean, I really support the COA on this project, and I would like to see them approach it in the right way and to see what the cost would really be. And this article doesn't fit that. So I don't know if we can sit down with them and, and work something out. It's obvious, at least to me now, that the article they've submitted is insufficient in, you know, in information that we need to move ahead with this. So what, how, how would you approach this, David? What could we do to help them out?
Well, what I would probably do is just sit down and it's, just frame out the issue in terms of saying, we don't feel that five hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to be sufficient, that we get, gather information on how much it will cost to do a preliminary study to say, all right, let's look at what you want to do and use the information that they provide us with. If it's bumping out the front or knocking down and petitioning the walls, and then adding in the cost of any handicap, hire an estimator and find out exactly what that cost would be to do the kind of renovations that they're talking about. And that could be a, a much less amount of money than, I had actually put an article on last year to, to, to do that, and it didn't move forward. But at this point, you know, it's, once again, it's a board decision. If, if you, you know, want to move forward with it, then you need to sit down, you need to come up with a plan on, you know, specifically what it is that you want to do with the building. And, and the bottom line is the bottom line. You need to get a cost. And I don't think five hundred and fifty thousand dollars is gonna be sufficient to cover that cost. And I, in terms of a project manager, you, you're gonna have to have a project manager or a clerk of the works. I think there's a certain threshold that if a project gets over, I believe it's over a million dollars, but it could be less than that. You have to have a project manager. If you don't have that requirement, then you, you're gonna want a clerk of the works. You're gonna want a guy onsite or a woman to, you know, be watching out for our best interests.
Lisa, did, did you say the, the number that you got from Pomeroy, is it, was seven hundred and fifty?
Yeah, I'm gonna go back and look at it again, um, my email, and see if I can find it, and I can forward it to the rest of the board.
Yeah.
And that was the total.
What you said, what I, what I had proposed last year wouldn't have been sufficient. I, I, I want to say, I asked it, I asked for fifteen thousand dollars to take a look.
So see, like, we already did the feasibility study, and Taylor, Taylor and Andy are, they know that building. So if they were to be the people that would be going, you know, would be involved in this, they already know that building. So, um, I wouldn't want to.
See it as a feasibility study, though. I see it, I see it as them describing their needs, specifically saying that we want to do this, this and this, and then having a cost estimator, somebody that's experienced in construction estimation, put together a, a, a build out in terms of how much it would cost, taking into account prevailing wage, taking into account handicapped accessibility, all of those things, to come to a final number. I think that we need to know what the actual real number is, rather than.
Exactly.
Try to ballpark it at this point. You know, if they want to, it, it, it all depends. If they just want to bump out the building by fifteen feet, that's one thing. If they want to say, all right, we want to configure this space on the inside, that's another thing. Now we're at a point, well, all right, we got, we're gonna have to do the handicap bathrooms, and we're gonna have to put an elevator in. How do we do those two things? How much is that gonna cost? You know, the, like I said, it's, it's taking, it's from the endpoint and going backwards to find out specifically how much all of those things are gonna cost. And then you're gonna need an architect to, you know, you just can't say, all right, we're just gonna hire a general contractor, let's bump out the building by fifteen feet, you know, and, and give them a sketch of a foundation and, and, you know.
That's it. That was my point, right? That, the, the money that I was talking about will do all of those things.
Yes, I agree.
Now, I don't, I don't want to throw fifteen thousand dollars at it. I think if this needs to get done, it needs to be done in the right way. And, and that's, that was my only, my only point about that five hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not nearly enough money. And if we're gonna do it the right way, that money is gonna be more than that. That's number one. But number two, do we even have the money? Will we even have the funds available?
I agree with that, too.
Yeah. Well, you know, we, that, that, we don't know the answer to that question, Lisa. And until we have that, we, we know we can't do it. I mean, that's a given.
I think we're not, until, until really July and August, after we're by this current situation, we're not gonna really know where we're at. I think we're, we're kind of uncharted waters, and we're sailing along, we're in good shape. But I think that we, we, like every other community in the Commonwealth, is, is coming into a point where, you know, we gotta see how this thing all plays out. You know, is, is it going to impact, you know, cars and buying homes and building and, and our general revenues, you know?
Can I suggest? Can I suggest, can I suggest that we meet with COA? And try to get some good numbers that you, I think you might already have, Lisa, from Pomeroy. And see where we are in the fall and see if we can put something on the uh. Uh, agenda for the fall meeting.
Alright.
But uh, we should do something. We can't just keep pushing this back.
Right, well, okay, you know, just end the discussion if I could. Alright, I I think we all agree that we wanna do it correctly. Uh, I think the bottom line is for right now. Really, in the foreseeable future, in the foreseeable futures, hopefully, right now is tomorrow, you know. We can plan in our minds, but I I think that this is something that we're going to have to put off. Uh, until we get a firm footing on what's going on in this world.
But that's, we might know that next month. But you know, we, we, I think, we we keep pushing this off, Charlie, we keep pushing it off. We need to, we need to at least plan, okay? I'm not saying that we need to build, but we should plan. And then when we see that we have the funds available, if everything goes well and this, this coronavirus goes away in the fall. Uh, we might be fine. We don't know that. But let's just, let's assume that.
No, we don't know, since we don't know, we, you know, we shouldn't be planning for he- here now. I think we, we have a, an obligation to everyone to uh husband our funds.
Charlie, I totally, Charlie, I totally disagree with your premise and I'll tell you why.
About ten minutes, and I think we need to move on because we're not gonna, we're not gonna solve that here tonight if if we please. Uh, I I I understand, you know, I understand things, but I I maybe I'm in a, I'm looking at things blackly. But I don't see it as something that's going to be able to be resolved in the next uh six months. Okay, that's my.
I totally disagree with you, Charlie, just put it right.
Yeah, that's, you, you're, you're entitled to your opinion.
Thank you.
Here's, here's what we, here's what we have all agreed upon. We have agreed to to reach out to the COA. And have a discussion with them to try to push this, get a a correct number and try to push this off for the fall town meeting. That's, that's what we've all agreed upon, I believe, correct? Okay, so we're good. So now we can move on.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lisa.
Oh, article number eighteen is the repurposing of six hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. From the water um. Do a commission back to the capital stabilization fund. I, I don't, does anyone need any review on that? Do they understand what that is?
No, I, it should go back to the capital stabilization fund.
Agreed.
Alright, uh. Nine, uh, article nineteen is repurpose the sum of sixty one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and ninety five cents. For bridge construction, uh, originally for bridge construction to the police station. Uh, debt or ban, uh, whatever comes first, so to speak.
I'm in agreement that the sixty one two eighty ninety five should be for the, to reduce the ban on the police station.
Agreed.
Alright, we'll go, we'll, I'll concur on that. Article twenty, authorizing the board of assessors to enter into a tax exempt lease purchase. Uh, TIF financing agreement with All American Investment Group for police cruises.
This is a TIF agreement?
No, pardon me, I I I can't read my own handwriting yet. Authorize the board to select, pardon me, okay, I get it now. Authorize the board to selectmen to enter into a tax exempt lease purchase financing agreements. For police cruisers. Uh, this is every year, uh, when they owe. Lease new cruisers or they have leases on uh present cruisers. They need to reaffirm uh the, the lease terms, it's.
In order to lease, we need this article.
Right.
So I'm good.
Yeah, it's a standard.
Continuation, just a continuation of our past practice.
Exactly.
Yes.
Okay, it's just one of that we have, it can only be uh authorized on a yearly basis. Um, article twenty one was basically a blank one, right, Tim?
That's correct. It's a placeholder at the moment.
Yeah, okay.
What is it, what it, oh, that's, sorry, I got it, okay.
Uh, article twenty two, spending limits for revolving accounts under article twenty nine of the general bylaws. We have revolving accounts uh that are used to fund certain activity. And this, again, is a yearly thing, uh, putting limits on the different funds. Anyone have any questions or comments?
No.
Okay, uh, twenty three, placeholder for a stretch code bylaw.
I'm gonna recommend that you pull that, cuz we're not gonna have the, everything in place by the time. Uh, that'll be a fall town meeting article if it, if it is at all.
Perfect, thank you.
Article twenty four is a zoning bylaw change. I think we read it, it's, it's removing one, I, I think, I don't have all the facts here. Is it floodplain, Tim?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, the maps.
Right, it's just changing the um maps of the floodplain.
Right, and it's a requirement by FEMA.
FEMA, yeah.
Okay, uh, twenty five, transfer uh funds to capital stabilization fund. And twenty six, the same for uh the regular stabilization fund. Um, you know, I think that remains to be seen, so to speak, and that's a standard article that we would have on the warrant anyways.
Could I just add one thing, uh, just so it goes on the record? Um, I know that the uh water sewer had requested placement of an article to. Keep that six hundred and twelve thousand dollars. It it's the board's intention not to put that article on, I guess.
Well, they wanted to pull the article about that.
They want, oh, alright, okay.
And we put it back on.
Alright, okay, I misunderstood that then. Alright, I just wanted to make sure that I, we weren't misrepresenting what the assessors. Water sewer commissioners wanted us to do.
Those, just to be clear, those funds are going back into the general fund, right?
Capital stabilization.
Right, that's basically general fund.
It's a savings account.
Yeah, it's a save.
But for the, yes, okay.
It's for, George, it's just for capital projects. So it's not a general fund, it's a savings account, just for capital projects.
No, no, but the question I really had was, was this for the whole town or just the water and sewage department? But I think it's for the whole town.
Whole town, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, right.
Alright, uh, that closes out the articles for the annual meeting. Um, I'll move on to the special town meeting articles. Uh, the first one would be the transfer twenty eight thousand three hundred and seventy one dollars and thirty four cents. In the uh water and sewer uh funds. Alright, Tim, can you give the particulars a little bit more? If you have them in front of you.
Yep, uh, this one was just a, uh, to allow them to pay previous year bills from their own money.
Okay, article two is the transfer from free cash, a hundred thousand dollars to the old colony. Uh, tuition fund for uh the. It's not actually special needs.
But that's a sped, that's a sped article.
An article, uh, which we uh had put off earlier in the year. Because we weren't sure if they were going to assess it or not. They have assessed it, we paid the first um portion of the assessment. And this would be uh, so we can pay these, the total on the old colony tuition.
Do we know how many students?
We have been still trying to get to that number.
So um, we can leave it on, but unless we have A, the formula that they're using and B, the number of students, we will pull it at that time.
They actually did provide us with, uh, actually Rick, uh, had, uh, when we had our meeting, Charlie and I. Um, he did say that the way they calculated it, there were two methods, they did use one of the methods. Uh, I wanna say that Kim, I don't know if Kim wants to chime in here, but they did provide us. You know, the mechanism by which they developed the assessment. The biggest problem has been trying to find out specifically what that number is. Because the school, the regional school, had a different number than Old Colony. And it was, it was basically two students.
Right, uh, and and just to your, just to your point, there is a mechanism in law, um.
They're entitled to it.
Yes, they are.
They are entitled to it, but if you read it, um, and according to um town council some time ago. The, both the town and the um old colony had to agree on the formula, so.
I I don't know if that's actually uh the facts at this time.
You know, Charlie, you don't ever believe me, but I will forward you the email from town council, how about that?
Alright, Lisa, okay, I I'm not, you know, I I I'm not here to pick a fight, I I, I'm I'm making a statement. Okay, I'm I'm making a statement, okay, if you don't agree with it, that's, that's your opinion. You you can, you can go along with it, but I don't, I don't particularly like that attack. I I I said nothing to you about that, and and this is not, I I'm sorry, but this is not the first time. I I try to go with facts, okay? I'm just trying to let everyone know that. The, the fact of the matter is, there's a stat, there's statutory uh oh provisions that allow for this. Okay, that's all I said, Lisa. I don't, I don't, I don't want my head, my head bit off because you don't, you don't like what what the fact is, alright?
I I said something to you and you said, I said something to you, no, you're going to let me speak.
No, Lisa.
No, you're going to let me speak. You're going to let me speak.
Lisa.
You said something, I said something to you that, no, there is one more part of that. Because Old Colony can't just give you a bill, you have to agree to the formula and how they derived from there. Now, if we agree on that, that's all well and good, but that's the second part of the law.
Alright, Lisa, but what I heard you say, okay, I I I, this is kinda ridiculous. What I heard you say is in the past, you had talked to town council. Now, I don't know what the past was, but I'm I'm, my comment was there that the past. I don't know what your past was, okay? That's all I.
September.
Alright, well, okay, but once again, Lisa, you say these things and I'm not calling, but. You know, it would be nice if you could forward such things to the other members of the board so that they have the information also. If you go out and you find some information and you keep it to yourself, I I I don't think that's right, okay? And I think everyone should have the same information, alright? That's my point, alright? Um, article number three uh is to transfer a hundred and sixty seven thousand nine hundred and sixty one dollars. And sixty six cents to pay sewer fees. In other words, um, the. The stop and shop, just so everyone knows for sure, the stop and shop uh sewer line had a new meter put in. And that caused for uh rates from the Farover Sewer Department to increase. To the point where the town, the sewer commission doesn't have it in their operating budget. They do have it in their retained earnings um or funds. And they want to transfer for the time being, basically, from retained earnings to um their general operating budget. Is that a correct summation, Kim?
Yep, that's right.
Okay, thank you. The next item is uh an article asking for special legislation for uh Conservation Commission. Uh, alternate members, they have to, to have all the, on the Conservation Commission. They have to have special legislation and the Conservation Commission is asking the community to vote on that. So they can uh request the authorization.
Uh, Tim, there's a Scrib News era, we got two article threes.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be updating those.
Alright, just so you know.
So, my question is, why is this on the special and not on the annual?
It can go on either one.
Okay.
You want us to move it to the other?
I, I just think, well, the way we've done it is everything that needs to be taken care of. Um, for this current year goes on special and anything that doesn't require this year to be closed out goes on annual. So it doesn't matter to me. I, I think it belongs on annual, but same thing with the one. Before it, that Charlie, you skipped over one, it's about uh Sonnet Boulevard. The section, map one oh two, so I, both of those need to go on the annual.
Alright, I guess my uh copying down, like they said, there was three articles and. It up, but yes, there's the article of uh a, oh, a lot on uh Sonnet Boulevard. Doesn't uh, the, uh, doesn't meet any kind of specification for sewage. Far too small and I believe it's now in the custody of the town and the Conservation Commission. Would request that we transfer it over to them, okay?
I believe most of the ones submitted by uh Mr. McHugh could go on either one, so I'll just confirm with him that it can go on either one.
Yeah, that's fine.
If it can, Tim, I prefer it go on the other one, but you can find out from him first.
Okay.
Because special town meeting is gonna be awfully long.
Right.
Like six articles.
No, with the, the one from the lake.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's a special town meeting.
Okay.
The second special town meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
Did I ask a question?
Sure, Kim.
Um, do you, did you have an article? I had submitted one to rescind the unissued portion of authorized debt for the police station, is that still there?
That's still there.
Okay.
Okay, and uh, I have it as article five, I don't know if it's actually article six, but it's to uh. As Kim said, it's to rescind the. The unissued portion of debt in the sum of seventy two thousand dollars. I believe this is, this is the second, like, I I realize that we did this before, Kim, for. For the reason that we did it before, we're doing it a second time.
No, it wasn't worded properly the first time, it was too confusing, so we took no action on that.
Okay, alright, uh, that's fine. Anyone have any issue on that?
No.
Alright, that being the uh review of the annual.
I actually just got confirmation from Mike McHugh that they both can go on the annual, so I'll put them on the annual.
Thank you.
Any type of motion or uh on the, on the warrant?
What kind of emotion do you need, Charlie?
Well, do, do you want to uh put them forward as, as they are? Do you wanna uh send them to town council, have him review them? And then uh come back with his uh recommendations, authorize the articles, what do we wanna do?
Isn't it, is it, it is routine for the town council to review, right?
Right.
Yes, so then why don't we wait till we get that?
Yeah, they re, the council reviews the form and content, basically. They, they just wanna make sure it's in a form and the content is correct, the form that's legal. And the content is reflecting what the petitioner or what the, you know, uh. A sponsor uh is trying to relay in a clear and concise manner. They clean up the line, basically, right?
So we should wait till we get that, right? Before we accept this? Is that the normal way to do it?
Right, I I would say that we wouldn't uh ratify the vote on the uh annual. And special town meeting warrants until they've been reviewed. I guess the only thing that we have to ask is are there any articles that we want, that we think we should remove? And not have reviewed. and not have reviewed by town council?
Fifteen.
The Article fifteen being Copacabana Road, is that?
Yeah. And, um, we have a question on Article five about the assistant assessor and the collective bargaining. And, um.
Stretch code.
Stretch code, Article, yeah.
Okay, so are we removing the article for the stretch code?
Yes.
They're not going to have enough time to do anything with that. It's going to be a fall thing anyway.
All right. Uh, so we're removing the article in relation to the stretch code and we're removing the article in relation to Copacabana Road. Is that, uh, an, I, I, an understanding?
And you, we need clarification or more explanation on Article four, which is the tree removal. And, um, are we leaving in the six thousand dollars for the lodge format printer scanner or are we removing that for now?
Um, well, my, my view is I guess we could ask a couple of questions if that could be put off, uh, that type of thing, um, to the.
Say, honestly, I would say hold off on that until the fall town meeting where we have a better sense on what's going on. That would be my recommendation.
All right.
I don't see, I don't see, I don't see it as critical. It, it would be nice to be able to, to print out plans and things like that, but it's, it's not, we've been functioning since the beginning of time without it and have a better sense, you know, three or four months from now, uh, where we stand, um, financially, I think it would be better planned to do it that way.
All right. Anyone have, uh, issues with any of that?
No.
No.
Okay. Um, Tim, do you want a motion or is that good enough?
Uh, if we're actually going to be rejecting articles, I would say, yes, we need a motion on that.
All right. We have a motion.
Uh, motion made.
Second.
A motion made and seconded. Uh, Tim, do you want to, just so there's no confusion, you want to read that back so everyone has an understanding?
Um, let's see, we have removing Article four, which is, nope, that was a question on Article four. I was removing Article ten, I believe.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Uh, removing Article fifteen, which is Copacabana Road.
Yes.
And removing twenty-three, which is the stretch code.
Yes.
Then are we proceeding with the other ones for now and then asking questions about those later?
We're removing the one, the copier one, too. Yeah, that's.
Water scanner.
Yep, okay.
We're removing ten, fifteen and twenty-three.
Okay. And do we, on Article eleven, which was a sixty-eight hundred dollars.
That's all.
Good with that now with the explanation, Kim?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next, uh, uh, next item is item eight, transfer, um, of, uh, money from the reserve, uh, fund to legal expenses. George had a question or, uh, wanted some more information last week. Are you, uh?
No, I, I, not so much that I had a question. I just wanted to review the bill just for my own personal information to see what we're spending, uh, these funds for. We don't have to hold it up.
Um, okay, I'll entertain a motion on that.
Make a motion to approve and, um, move forward to the, uh, finance committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to, uh, authorize the, um, transfer to the finance committee of the legal expenses of the reserve fund. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Uh, Charlie, you skipped to number seven, which was the FY twenty budget update.
Pardon me. I thought that was probably the budget review. I, my mistake. Okay, yes. Uh, fiscal year twenty twenty budget update.
All right. Okay. Um, I just wanted to let the board know that we have been, uh, working, um, on, uh, preparing a revised budget based upon, um, the information that we have, uh, given the current situation we find ourselves in with the COVID nineteen issue. Um, that we've asked all of them, uh, we've had a department headed meeting and we discussed pretty much every line in the budget. Um, and all the, almost all the departments were able to hold on certain items such as travel expense, meetings and things like that. We also identified other items that weren't travel and otherwise were the things that are they gonna, were, I guess, basically lines that, um, weren't expended to date and whether they were gonna get, whether they were going to be expended between now and the end of June. Uh, the whole point is that we want to, uh, hold off on all of these till the end of May so we know, you know, specifically where we are. At that point, we're going to have a clearer picture as to, uh, of our collections and, uh, and we can revisit some of these if they're absolutely needed. Uh, the impact on the spending freeze based upon our calculations, um, uh, is, uh, just over four hundred thousand dollars that we've identified and targeted as money that we can hold, uh, at this point in time, uh, pending, uh, the outcome of the, the collections and just seeing where we are at the end of the year. Um, extraordinary expenses, uh, it was agreed by the department heads that all extraordinary expenses would be cleared through me so that at this point, no one is making, you know, purchasing any large equipment or, uh, procuring any kind of service that is, uh, larger, uh, than normal and, uh, i- i- it's basically a, a mechanism by which we can control our costs. Uh, currently, we have a hiring freeze, uh, with no increases in hours except for public safety, uh, personnel so that we can effectively manage the current situation that we have, um, with the virus and how we're handling that. Um, we have discussed, uh, looking at, um, 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 the, uh, potential of, uh, the real estate commitment, moving it from May first to June first. Our general consensus is that we don't recommend that we do that at this point. Um, and that we can, uh, potentially waive, uh, the interest penalty or other charges on, uh, betterment assessments, water, sewer, real estate, excise, um, or any bill with a due date of March ten, two, twenty twenty, if the bill is not paid by tw, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Uh, we're recommending that we do do that, um, specifically because, you know, we know that people are, you know, gonna have trouble getting the bill in, in May. Uh, as I explained previously, we do have principally, uh, three, uh, third-party vendors that a lot of people, they, that when they take out their mortgage, uh, the mortgages, um, the mortgage company collects not only for the, the principal and interest on the original note, but also carry, uh, a certain amount, uh, for real estate taxes as well as a certain amount for, uh, property insurance. And those, uh, accounts, we suspect that we're going to get a hundred percent of those, which is, is better than half of our commitment for May. So the, the determining factor will be the other half. And, uh, in an effort not to penalize anybody at this point, uh, it would be our recommendation that we keep the May commitment on, on time and that we waive, uh, any, uh, penalties or assessments associated with that commitment. Uh, it's also important to note, um, that the, the legislation that allows us to do that um, requires, uh, that we mail out notice to all town residents, uh, that if we were moving the date, that we're moving the date, but if we're not moving the date, that's not an issue. But that if we're waiving, uh, interest and penalties, that, that be, uh, uh, given out to all, uh, you know, property owners in the community. We had a discussion about that today as part of the meeting. Um, and, um, the, uh, consensus was that we have the mechanism to do that. It would be handled through Jess, uh, and the collector's office. What we would do is we'd send out a postcard. Uh, we essentially would just be printing postcards. We'd send, drop them off at the post office. They would then attach labels or however they do it so that every household in the community uh, gets a card announcing, you know, that we are, uh, allowing them to, uh, to submit their bills without interest or penalties. Um, uh, on the budget, uh, uh, we have, uh, together, uh, a pro forma budget and, and everybody at this point should have gotten it today. Uh, we sent it out. Um, I wanted to, uh, thank, uh, Kim and Jess and Ally, uh, for, uh, you know, working diligently to help us to pull this whole thing together so that we're able to at least, uh, give you a preliminary overview of what it is that we're looking at and how we're going to address the situation. All of the budgets are level funded for fiscal year, uh, uh, fiscal year twenty-one with only CBA increases allowed and, uh, mandatory increases, uh, that have been identified such as retirement, health, property casualty, workers comp, et cetera. Uh, we're going to continue with our hiring freeze, uh, and have no increases in, uh, existing hours, uh, for employees uh, continuing into the, the new fiscal year until we have a better understanding of where we are, uh, financially. In preparing the budget, uh, we based it on certain, uh, assumptions of, uh, that that new growth would be reduced by five percent, that our, uh, local receipts would be reduced by five percent, the cherry, the cherry sheet, uh, allotment from the state would be reduced by ten percent and that we're probably looking at a real estate and personal property, uh, not so much a default, but a late payment of five percent. Uh, by adopting the pro forma budget, uh, it will allow us to, uh, have a, uh, balanced budget that will be in effect, uh, starting July one. Uh, and, uh, we can basically move forward on that, uh, getting a snapshot in July and August and September to make adjustments that we need to make. If we're in, uh, we're in good shape. Uh, if we need to, to do some cutting or we need to revisit, we could do that at the fall town meeting. Uh, and at that point, we'll have a pretty good understanding where all of these numbers are falling and, and where our collections were for the, for the last, uh, commitment as well as, you know, we're going into it with the understanding that, uh, everything's being level funded except for collective bargaining. Certain things, uh, did pop out, one of which is, uh, where we are increasing the unemployment amount. Uh, the, there's a tricky, the unemployment is a tricky situation because you, you know, you say, well, we want to, um, you know, reduce our staff and, and we want to get X amount of dollars, uh, out of the savings by, uh, putting people on unemployment. The problem is you are still obligated to pay that. We're on a pay-as-you-go. And it takes more people to effect, effectuate the savings. Uh, and as a result, you end up laying off, you know, way more people than you need to do to get to a certain number. The preferred route would obviously be, if possible, and I'm not putting anything in stone at this point, is looking at, uh, you know, uh, reducing hours or, you know, uh, basically restructuring jobs so that we can get there, uh, without having to lay a whole bunch of people off. And, and we're not even at that point. So I, I, I'm just bringing it up. We did increase the unemployment account up to, I want to say it's a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars from its current level, which is twenty-four thousand dollars. That would cover approximately, uh, five layoffs if we had to do that. Uh, the regional school, we didn't touch anything with that. It's level funded as it is in the FY twenty budget. Um, we suspect that they're going to be making changes. We don't know what those changes are now. But, uh, we're planning on, you know, adjusting that once again after they adjust our, um, when they adjust their assessment, that will adjust our budget. Old Colony, we took a look at no freshman class and, uh, on the basis of that, there's a reduction of three hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. That's based on seventeen kids and seventeen, um, I'm sorry, seventy kids and seventeen sped kids. As far as certain, um, budget items such as equipment, um, for the remainder FY, uh, twenty, uh, the following will not be part of the spending freeze due to contractual obligations we have entered into contracts. We have actually procured things and, um, such as the, uh, or in the process of procuring, such as the town hall phone system, uh, the, uh, vehicle for the council and aging. For FY twenty-one, we're only, only existing leases for the fire, highway dump truck, police cruises have been funded as part of the operational budget. For building and other property improvements, uh, for the remainder of twenty, uh, the following will not be part of the spending freeze due, once again, to general obligations that we've contracted. Uh, the generator is, we haven't paid for it yet, but it, we have the propane tank and the generator is sitting outside the building on a pad. Uh, it remains to be hooked to the propane and the propane tank, uh, the generator, uh, needs to be, uh, 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 fixed to a, um, a switch inside the building to a transfer switch to allow it to operate. Um, the built-in freezer, we're still, we're, we're, part of that, a good chunk of that, I guess, is coming out of a grant. So we are, um, we're, we're, at the present time, we've left that in. Um, that, that's, could be something that could be open for discussion if the board so chooses. Uh, the LED lights, uh, we are there. I have, uh, uh, eighteen thousand dollars worth of light sitting over at the highway department. Uh, the next step is to, uh, have those lights installed. We have them there. They, they have, we have a company uh, that Arden, uh, Electrical or Arden Engineering that, um, is going to be able to put those lights up. If we don't put the lights up, we're going to lose a ten thou, well, actually ten thousand dollars in grants. One five thousand dollar grant from, um, MAPC as well as another, uh, grant or subsidy from EverSource. So it's in our best interest to continue on that path. Finally, uh, the renovation of the facade of Station One with the garage doors. Uh, the bids are, uh, the, the, the bid documents have been prepared. Uh, we've been moving forward with that and, uh, we recommend that you, we continue to move forward with that. Uh, as far as FY twenty-one in terms of a capital bill or building project, the only thing we're going to be recommending at this point is, uh, the rubber roof for the highway department. I believe it's, uh, in the budget for, uh, forty-five thousand dollars. It's something that has to be done. It's a, it's a needed, uh, repair. And I don't think, uh, we want to put that, that's one we won't want to put up, uh, put off. Once again, depending upon, uh, what financial condition we're in in the fall, we may want to reconsider some of the other projects that have dropped off of us, such as the bandstand, such as, um, you know, some of the other little smaller projects that we had. We had talked about, uh, doing some, uh, pavement work in the town, at the town hall, uh, where you have a pad, it's all cut up and patched. Those are things down the road that we might want to do, but as part of the FY twenty-one budget, we don't have that in there right now. Some of the personnel issues that we, um, feel that the board are going to need to address, uh, one is the whole issue of the assessors. Um, you know, the, uh, there's been a lot of discussion, uh, surrounding whether we're going to, um, um, go out to hire a, a director of assessing or whether we're going to need, uh, to hire, uh, a person with the same title as the, uh, as the, uh, previous assessor, which was an assistant assessor. Or whether there could be some, uh, hybrid alternate that might be available that would allow the assessors to get the technical expertise that they need, um, through, uh, a consultant, but rather than having a full-time employee do, and do that. That's not their recommendation. Their recommendation is they want a dairy roll and, uh, uh, you know, that's. And uh, uh, you know, that's, and the union has its own specific um, opinion on, at that point, we, we will have to either, we'll have to supplement the budget if it's a director of assessing or we'll have to, if it's a consultant, if there's more money needed, we'd have to address it at that. Or they'll just have to find a, a person who's willing to accept the position at the pay level that uh the previous assessor was working at or consider maybe that person being just a halftime position versus a full-time position. Uh, part of this budget, we've also eliminated two part-time workers uh that were proposed by Conservation at the Port of Pasture. Um, the, we did put in, I did put in the budget, uh, uh, custodial staff for uh the new police station. Um, we, we, we'd like to have a discussion about that. Um, one being, do we want to have a person have a part-time position? Or is that something that might be better handled by having a service where we don't have all the contractual obligations of workers comp, FICA, FICA, um, unemployment and all of health insurance and all of those kind of things? That if we're not happy with the service, we can uh quickly move forward. If the person doesn't show up, they send somebody else instead. There's a whole bunch of benefits that are associated with having uh, uh, a cleaning service versus having uh an individual employee. So that's a discussion we're going to have to have. Uh, there is in the police department budget, a confidential secretary uh in the budget right now. We're going to be taking that out with the understanding that, once again, that's a, a discussion for later when we find out specifically um, you know, where we are financially. Finally, the library director. Another situation where we're going to fund it, fund it at the current library director's um, current salary with the understanding that um we can reevaluate it in September. Uh, if they hire a person for X amount of dollars and it's higher than what's budgeted and it is an agreement between the Board of Selectmen and the trustees, that that's the direction we want to move in, then we will uh do a supplemental budget um request as part of the uh special town meeting. Uh, we've also taken a look at the potential cost for the articles and uh the things that we would recommend funding are the OPEV study, the veterans' graves, the headstones. Uh, with the knowledge that those um uh articles will be funded out of the uh general funds. However, any other articles that are uh funded uh would have to be out of other sources. So, you know, that would be the decision, where is the money coming from? Given this whole scenario at the present time, um, we have a reserved excess levy capacity and the pro forma FY twenty-one budget with the changes that have been made of one million, one hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. We have an unreserved excess capacity of five hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and four dollars. The unreserved excess capacity is there only because we want to make sure that if we are unable to um, uh, uh, meet our commitment in terms of real estate taxes. We have a fallback amount of money that can be used to offset any deficit that we may have uh as a result of not being able to uh fully collect uh the commitment for uh that period. So that's sort of a summary of where we're at. Uh, I, I don't know if Kim wants to, Kim has been awesome, by the way. I can't say enough about her. She's I mean, she goes up above and beyond and, and she's been, you know, she, she's the person who's, you know, has a, the handle on everything and I'm very uh fortunate to have her as our accountant and uh she uh uh, she's done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Anyone have any questions?
No.
All right. Um, item number nine is to ratify and confirm.
David, do you need a vote on to, uh, I mean, we did the um excise taxes, the penalties. Do you need a vote on the real estate?
Yes, we do.
All right. So I'll make a motion to um waive the penalties and late fees for um real estate?
Yes, the real estate may, real estate commitment.
And, and we already did excise, so what else do you need?
That, uh, Kim had mentioned the abatements, the um water sewer, was it?
Um, you would want to waive interest penalty or other charges for excise, tax, betterment assessments, water and sewer usage for any bills with a due date of March tenth.
So I'll make a motion to what she said.
Sounds good to me.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made. Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
All right. Um, David, can I ask you to um put together a priority list, please? Um, if we do have extra funds, how do we prioritize that?
Okay.
We all set?
Yes.
No, I have a question. I have a question. Uh, on the assessors and the cleaning service, uh, how are we moving forward on that? How, how, how the decision's being made whether to go with one or the other?
On the assessors, a uh union has met with us and expressed their uh concerns about um, elevating the position to a director of assessor uh primarily because of the fact it wouldn't be a union position. And their intent would be, I don't know if I'm, am I getting into tricky situations here or?
We're waiting to hear back, right? I mean, that, we sent them a letter um, and actually the collective bargaining unit has to agree to it and we're waiting to hear back from them. So we don't know if they have yet agreed to this or not.
Yeah.
Agreed. Uh, we'll come to it.
Cutting the hours of the previous position.
Uh, but I, if I understood David correctly, with for a director of assessing, that we're only going to give you fifty-two thousand dollars, which is the current level of funding for the assistant assessor. The, the quandary is going to be whether you can find a person who's qualified to do that job for fifty-two thousand dollars. An option that's available to the Board of Assessors would be to say, all right, we can't, we, you know, we can get a uh consulting service that might do it. In fact, there's one very, you know, uh, recognized one that handles a number of communities and they could come in and do it for that. But once again, we got the union problem. That's the union position and, and whether or not, um, you know, the union is going to say, yeah, we, it's okay not to, to have, uh.
I think, do you, the union can dictate whether we go to a consultant or a cleaning service? That?
No, they could only, they could only object to a difference in changing the assistant assessor's position. So you would, if you did a consulting firm, like, for instance, Lakeville has a consulting firm. They use a firm. And then they have a full-time and a part-time person in the office as well. So, um, I don't think, I don't, I don't think that the union would be obje, would object to that because we're not changing what's happening within that office. I mean, like now, we have a consultant.
They don't want to lose members. That's their primary focus. They're, they, they don't want to lose positions because that's what a union is to preserve jobs for their members.
I understand that, but uh, for instance, a cleaning service to the police station?
That, that's, George, George, that's another issue, which is an option.
Yeah, we could, we could hire a halftime person. In fact, in the original budget, I had it in both. Uh, tentatively, until a decision was made, either we were going to go with a twenty-hour, part-time custodian to do the police station building alone or whether we were going to hire a cleaning service to do the same thing. It was going to be for, approximately for the same amount of money, but.
My question, David, is, I, I understand what you're saying, but who, who makes a decision? Well, let's just go with the cleaning service for discussion here. Who makes a decision whether we go with a cleaning service or hire a custodian?
I would say the board makes that.
Yes, the board will make that decision, George. It has nothing to do with the union. The, the issue with the assessors is that the assistant assessor is a position at present, and what do we do with that? That is totally different than whether or not we hire a cleaning service or go with a part-time custodian uh at the police station.
Okay, so, uh, the, all right, so the cleaning service or not, that's, that's a board decision?
Certainly.
All right. Now, on the assessor's side, whether we go with a consulting firm or not, that is the Board of Assessors' decision?
Yes, because they're an elected body.
Okay.
All right. We all? We ready to move on?
Yep.
Item number nine was to ratify and confirm votes taken in executive session on April one, twenty twenty. And Tim, uh, if I'm doing something wrong, please advise me, but I'm going to read the announcement of going into, of the executive session for both of those items. And then we will vote on that to reaffirm that, correct?
I, I just want to double check. Ally's actually the one that's been running point on this, so she's the one to talk to. I'm actually not familiar.
We wanted to identify from the emails specifically what uh, uh, how the board made the decision to enter into executive session. There's probably ten steps uh that the board took to make that decision. The vote should incorporate the reasoning and rationale of why the board entered into that decision. I can read it. Ally can read it.
More importantly, it's to, it's to say why you declared it an emergency executive session because we weren't within the forty-eight hours for the open meeting law requirement. So you need to make sure that you're, you're stating the reasons why you went into, you had to go into an emergency executive session, which were outlined, which was outlined in the email I sent on Saturday to each of you.
Okay, so is there anything I need to do other than to read our uh oh, position on the law as we normally do?
You need to. I, I have, I have it in front of me.
All right, if you have it in front of you, why don't you read it?
Okay, on March thirty-first, twenty twenty, at one fifty-three PM, the town administrator received a proposed memorandum of agreement for the town's police union concerning working conditions during the COVID-nineteenth state of emergency. Based on the content of the proposed MOA and the urgency surrounding the need to take action to protect the town officers during the state of emergency, the chair deemed it necessary to convene an, an emergency meeting. Accordingly, on March thirty-first, twenty twenty, at four seventeen PM, the town clerk was asked to post an emergency meeting of the Board of Selectmen for April first, twenty twenty, at ten fifteen AM. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the police union and the notice indicated that the board's intent to enter executive session for that purpose. After the emergency meeting was posted, April the board received a similar, similar proposal from the MOA from the fire union. Once again, given the urgency of the situation, the chair felt the matter required the board's immediate attention. As a result, on April first, twenty twenty, at nine oh six, the board requested that the town clerk amend the meeting notice to include the notice of the executive session to discuss collective bargaining with respect to the fire union. Unfortunately, due to the closure of town hall as a result of the COVID-nineteenth outbreak and limited availability of the town clerk, the notice was not officially posted until eleven oh five AM. During the open session portion of the meeting, which was broadcast on Freetown Cable TV and later posted to the town's YouTube channel, the board received updates from the health agent and town administrators concerning the state of emergency, including updates on the number of affected residents, new orders from the governor and the town's finances. The board members did not comment on the updates and no votes were taken. The entire open session portion of the meeting lasted less than nine minutes and the only votes taken were to enter into executive session. The open session portion of the meeting is still available on YouTube. Um, okay, so although the board is mindful of its obligations of the, under open meeting law, it believes that the safety of its police officers and firefighters is paramount. Given the current state of emergency and highly dangerous nature of the COVID-nineteenth outbreak, the board firmly believes that the discussion fell within the emergency exception to the open meeting law. However, in this interest of full disclosure, I move that the board vote to ratify and confirm the open second votes taken on April first, twenty twenty as follows. I move pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, that the board ratify and confirm its decision to enter executive session during its April first, twenty twenty emergency meeting to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Freetown Police Association and the Freetown Full-Time Firefighters because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position and the chair deemed it necessary. I further move that the board vote to acknowledge receipt of the open meeting law complaint filed by Mr. Patrick Higgins in that it authorized town council to respond on the board's behalf. Those are my two motions, and that's the explanation.
All right, um, just on the explanation, just so everyone is um aware, and we have it on the record, that in the, I believe, in item eight, it was uh speaking of being on cable TV, it wasn't on cable TV, but it was uh YouTube, correct, Tim?
That's correct.
Okay, so if we could just make that uh notation, okay, um, motion made. Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, Tim, we do have to ratify our entrance into um, oh, executive session, correct?
Uh, again, that would be a question for Ally. I'm not, I wasn't a part of that conversation.
Okay, Ally?
You, you just did that. You're all, you're all good.
We're all set on that, okay. Because I had the warning on the uh agenda that we needed, if we needed to do that. All right, uh, next uh item would be to vote to acknowledge the receipt of the open meeting law complaint.
Already did that too.
Okay, good. We'll move on. Uh, eleven minutes for March twenty-fifth, March thirtieth and April one, twenty twenty.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, the next item is whether or not we open, reopen town hall.
Okay.
Um, so we, I received a, um, an email from Jackie saying that
Yeah, we all did.
Okay, so I, I'm just gonna reiterate that I do believe that there are that at least two days a week, somebody should be in town hall.
The other thing I'd like to bring up here, at our last meeting, we discussed the phone system, that we couldn't change anything in the phone system. Uh, I'd really like some clarification on that because we do change the messages that we hear. Is that not correct, Tim?
That's just changing the voicemails.
There's no, there's no central board that um one person has access to. Everything is, it, it, it's a trunk. It comes into a main number and then gets parceled out to each of the individual extensions.
Right, and you have a message there that tells you?
Yep, people call in, they can dial in and get their message.
No, no, that's not what I meant. Uh, what I'm getting at is, David, what, what I'm getting at is, when I, if I dial in, I get a message that tells me uh to press one for this department, two for that department, et cetera. That not correct?
Yes.
Now, that message is firmware? It can't be edited?
It can be edited, but we don't have access to it. It can be edited, but we don't have access to it because that system is so old, we don't have the credentials to get into that system any longer. That's why if you actually, if you actually go through it and listen to it, it doesn't. It says building department, but it sounds like it says billing department, we can't do anything about it at this point. We were supposed to be getting a new phone system that we would have full access to be able to change whatever we needed to do. But that was supposed to be installed last week, so. Once the building was closed, we weren't able to get that installed.
I guess I don't quite understand the access to that particular recording.
I don't know what what you're trying to say, George.
What's what's your point, George, if you please?
Well, my point is, when you dial in now.
Yep.
You you get a recording.
Yes.
And that recording tells you. What number to punch to get whoever.
Yep.
Now, if we can edit that. But I'm being told we can't edit that.
That's correct, that's correct.
And there's no way to, that just signed up.
What would editing it do?
It's a fifteen year old system that really drastically needs updating, which we had in in place, but it's on pause at the moment.
So are we saying the way it is now? Is fixed in stone and there there is absolutely nothing we can do to change the way this thing works?
Until we get a new phone system, that's correct.
If we had not experienced the COVID thing. The new phone system would already be installed.
Yeah, I know, that's.
I'm just saying that, you know, we we knew that there was a problem, that's why we were trying to address that problem before it became a problem. Unfortunately, the two events, you know, coincided with each other.
Yeah. So I mean, the issue becomes if. If we have one person in in town hall. They. If if you're calling that person at that extension, that probably will work.
The only problem, the only problem if you do that, you're basically gonna going to, if you were to call the town hall. You would be getting, say you would reach me. If you're trying to reach the town clerk's office, I would have to then tell you, okay, Mister Granwell, please hang up. Call back and instead of hitting my extension, you have to hit this extension. So basically, you're adding multiple extra steps for a resident to take before.
And the thing is, is that everybody that's working from home. Dials in to check their messages. Everybody that's working from home has the capability to do the work that they could do at town hall remotely. And once again, I, you know, I. I have nothing else to say, I've explained it, this is gonna be the third time I've expressed my. Feelings about this is that I don't want to put anybody in harm's way. I think that the fact that the city of Boston completely closed down today. That they're releasing people from jails because they're trying not to get them to have COVID. And we're ordering our people to go in two days a week. Is I I just, I I I just can't agree with that, I'm. Philosophically, I just think I I'm not, I don't want to put people's. I don't want to put people's lives in in harm's way.
That's not my where. I'm just trying to figure out the phone system.
All right, but George, you know, the hour is getting late too, and.
Yeah.
So. I I guess my question is. What are we gonna do about, uh, town hall? I I think, you know.
This is the biggest, the next two weeks are the biggest.
Right.
Impacts for, they're saying that the seventeenth, eighteenth and nineteenth are gonna be. And the and the number of COVID cases in Freetown is increasing. As we have, as we've been learning and they're increasing in every community. And it's also, yeah. I I I don't know, I don't know what else to say, I just. I'm I'm beyond words, I guess that, you know, maybe I'm. I I don't know.
All right, well, if the phone system is as broken as you say, there's nothing we can do anyways, so. I had some different thoughts, but. I'll have to hang on to those. So continue.
All right, so I I guess the question is. Are we going to continue to close town hall? In my own opinion, and for what it's worth, and I is, uh, that it's imperative that we do this. I I understand that Jackie has sent a email and I I wouldn't mind addressing. That, but I I think first we have to say, are we are we not going to keep town hall closed? And, you know, I I just, you know, want to say that. We want to protect our our employees, I mean, we 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 want to be as safe as we possibly can. And I I think with, uh, with some few exceptions, I would. Agree to address after we make this vote, I I think we should, uh, close town hall, uh, for. Well, at least the next three weeks.
Uh, let's, well, let's discuss Jackie's, uh.
Well, George, i- if I may, okay, okay, I I think I'm the chair, I'm asking, I'm just asking. Before we talk about Jackie and other possible matters. Do are we, first thing, are we going to continue to close town hall? In my.
I think those those questions are related, you can't.
Yeah, I I realize that, but I I think that this this special, um. Oh. Information that we have from Jackie that in what she might want to do, but I I think we need to, uh, and we can address that. But I don't think that addressing that first is going to, uh, be productive, I I think we should.
I think the other part of it is, is there there are going to be instances where somebody may have to go into town hall to do something. And I think the acknowledgement there is that they're probably gonna go into town hall and nobody else is there. That therefore not putting themselves at risk. The philosophy in in. Freetown, that's in all of the other communities, the managers on the manager's board, is they want their people to get in. Do what they gotta do and get out, they don't want them lingering around in the building, they don't want them touching. The door handles, the doorknobs, the toilet knobs, you know.
Yeah, no, and I I totally agree with that, but if if you have one person that wants.
But everybody can work remotely, that's the thing.
If one person, George, George, I I will get back to the idea, if one person feels they need to extend beyond, uh, just passing through. I understand that, but my point is, the question be before us right now. Is what do we do about, uh, a continued closing of town hall or not?
Well, how about this? I would agree to continue. Keeping the town hall closed with some exceptions.
Fine, I I I would, I would concur with that, George, okay. Uh, Lisa, do you have any input you want to put in?
No, I'm I'm listening right now.
All right, all right, so George, are you gonna going to make a motion then to continue to close? Uh, to to have town hall closed with the, uh, understanding that in a discussion. For one person or or maybe other people that, um. We, the policies, we're gonna close town hall and then we'll come back.
Would accept. My my. I guess, let's make it a motion. Is that I would continue to keep town hall closed with exceptions to be discussed. So we could, after we have this vote, so to speak. Then we can discuss exceptions. And whatever those exceptions are.
I concur with you, George, and.
I I think that. There are some people that just don't want to go to town hall, I get that, but there are some people that actually want to go to town hall to do their job.
Lisa, I understand that, and that, same, we'll we'll come back and we'll discuss that. If I I I understand that, but, you know. We're, I think we're all in agreement that there has, that that. We're gonna need some exceptions, but if you're not gonna make them, uh, if you're not gonna second, I will second George's motion.
I I don't know what the motion is.
The motion is to close town hall with the, um, exception that we're going to, well, with the understanding that we're going to talk. Uh, presently about exceptions, um. Oh, to the general rule. Okay, is that, is that a summation of George?
Yeah, well, I just want to make clear that. We we're making a general statement, the town hall will be closed. But we can make whatever exceptions that we all agree to. So that if employee X needs to be there, either at their own volition or whatever. That this is allowed. And if we as a board decide whoever needs to be there. Then that would be an exception, so. I would, the the word exception becomes a little bit broad. So that I I don't want to sound like. The motion to close town hall is an absolute.
All right, I I I understand that and and I concur with that, uh, with that summation.
I'm gonna make a motion. To.
All right, well, first of all, hold on, hold on, first of all, we have the motion with the second of George's motion.
I'd like to hear what Lisa has to say, Charlie.
Well, well, but but, well, are we gonna follow rules, are we going, okay, you're gonna withdraw your motion, George?
I've put it time being, so Lisa can speak.
All right.
I'm gonna make a motion to close town hall to. But to allow whoever wants to work at town hall can work at town hall. Because the water department has requested to work at town hall, town clerk has requested to work at town hall on on occasion. Ally needs to get into town hall on occasion, Tim needs to get into town hall on occasion, Derek needs to get into town hall on occasion.
All right, we understand that, Lisa, and so.
That was always the intent.
That that was always the intent and. I I think. Well, okay, so.
So those will be the exceptions, Charlie.
Right, okay, well, or maybe the exception, I I think that. There's, I would not want to see, uh, five or six people all in town hall all at once. That's my, that's my biggest concern.
How many would you allow?
I I I would say probably no more than two.
Well, some people work upstairs and some people work downstairs.
I understand that, and why I say two, all right? Um, you know, I I I don't know, the water department has never made any, um, formal. Uh, discussion, if someone made a discussion with you, Lisa, that's knowledge I do not have, but so. George, your your motion was to continue to close town hall to people other than those who may at some time want to come in. Is that, is that clear? In my.
Yeah, you paraphrased it, but I'm saying is the town hall is. Closed with exceptions, and that's abroad, leaves a big door open. For whatever we choose that to mean, if people, you know, Jackie wants to come in. Then, yes, we'll make the exception. If the building inspector needs to come in, yes, we'll make the exception. Uh, we can maybe limit that to two or three people at a time. Uh.
That that is, that is what I've been asking for the last two weeks. I I stated that in the original policy, that people might have to come in to do specific things. For example, if they needed to pick up their mail. They could come in and pick up their mail, I don't want them sitting there, opening the mail, sorting the mail, si- sitting in the building for three hours. The idea behind that has always been, yes, you can go in the building, but go in. Use care and caution and get out. That's, you know, if you gotta do work, you have a, you know, something that's on your computer that you specifically have to do there. Then there's an understanding that you can do that, but don't. You know, stay in the building, I guess. I I I don't, I don't know.
All right. So. George. Do we? Do we have a motion?
Well, my motion was to basically close the building. But leave the option to each individual who works in town hall. If they need to come in to do work. That they have the ability to do so. Uh, maybe we should limit the number of people that can be in town hall at the same time. I think that that's a good idea.
That's exactly what we've been saying for the last, I don't even know how long, two days a week with a schedule, isn't that?
No, 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 hold on, no, 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 Lisa, that's not what we've been talking about, um. The thing is, no, don't, you know, Lisa, you you talked about. Well, you accused me of rolling my eyes and you just rolled your eyes, but, all right, but. George. Um. I I. My understanding of what you're saying is that people can come in for. Short periods of time, is that correct?
I didn't say short periods of time, I said they can come in, I didn't.
All right.
Limit it. I mean, if somebody, what is a short period of time, you know?
All right, well, I I would say, personally, I would say, uh, you know, two or three hours. All right, I, Jackie Brown has articulated her concerns. And I'm willing to discuss those and try to work around those, but I I just don't think that. Of the board or anyone else should be ordering people that they have to go into town hall and do some, uh. Something that they can, especially something that they can do.
No, no, be very clear, no one is ordering anybody to do.
Okay, all right, because. I I'm. At this time, I'm uncertain, but, all right, George, so. I you gotta make a motion. Would you articulate your motion, please?
Well, my motion was, and I'll repeat it. The town hall will be closed to normal business. But town employees who have a need to come in to work. At their own discretion. Can come in and do it.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm fine with that. Lisa, do you have any input?
No, just, I would, I would say that if you want to limit the people or how many, then you should come up with the schedule, like Mondays and Wednesdays, it would be.
All right.
Thursdays upstairs.
Right, right, that's something I think we can discuss in a moment, and that's those particulars, I I think that's, that was my point all along. All right, George, I I will second that motion. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now, to go on to. What's that?
A point of order, you should be doing roll call votes for all votes on with remote participation, so we're gonna have to go back and redo all the votes from tonight.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry, we're. Too bad you didn't, uh, can I, can I lump it?
Uh, no, but I can read you the motions if you want to redo them.
Um. All right, uh, would've been nice if we had been able to do this earlier, but, all right, go ahead, Tim.
Do you want to finish this topic and then go back?
Well. All right, um, the. All right, well, on on this, on this motion, uh, Mister Granwell.
Can you read the motion back to me? Tim?
Uh, motion to close town hall to normal business, but town employees who have a need to come into work at their own discretion can come in and do so.
Thank you.
Okay, Mister Granwell, your vote?
Aye.
Miss Pacico?
Yes.
Mister Sullivan, yes, all right, the. The other matter was who and how are we going to, uh, allow people in? And as we all know, I think we all read Jackie had sent along, um, an email with her concerns. Um, and there's. Oh, you know, some other concerns and who who might want to come in at a time and to your point, Lisa, okay. We can either have a schedule or we could make. You know. Some other arrangement, but if you if you have a schedule, you you think that people, uh, want to come in, then I'm I'm clear on hearing this. The the only thing that I think that we have to watch out about is making sure that the. My understanding is the virus will, uh, die in a few hours if it's airborne. The the issue is that they can live for up to seventy two hours. I've read on.
Surface.
At least certain metals, okay, and so I think we have to address that. But, okay, Jackie would like to come in, I think Jackie, uh. I mean, I read the email, but she would like to come in for a couple of hours. Is that everyone else's understanding?
Yeah, I mean, that's she's gonna have to work according to what her schedule is gonna allow her to work. She might want to stay there for four hours. I don't know.
Okay. All right, so in you're saying something about an issue with the water department?
Yeah, they have to get their bills out on for last for last week, so they need to get in there.
All right, so is this, oh, Chandler's request that he be allowed to go in?
Correct.
All right, you know. All right, so I I guess what I throw out to is we could have David set up, talk to some people, set up oh, a scheduled so that like Chandler and Jackie are not in the building at the same time. And same with anyone on the second floor who might need to. Yeah, is that something that's agreeable?
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, so I would prefer that we do that. Also, I think there's some things that we should also consider is that when if anyone goes into Town Hall, they have some some type of a face mask on and that they wear it inside the town. Not that it's going to protect anyone else in the building, but it would protect the building from anyone who may have the virus, not know it, and you know, be spreading the germs without. Well, we can if we can prevent the spread of germs as much as we can, that would be, I think, helpful. I think also that to advise them to if every metal object that they touch, such as door handles and so forth, that they should protect themselves in touching them. And the last thing is that when they are in there, my understanding is air circulation is a big situation. It might, you know, in April, it might be strange, but to instruct them to turn on air conditioning, at least fan wise, whenever possible.
Those aren't installed in offices yet.
Like, excuse me?
Uh, those aren't installed in offices yet. So they all they would be able to do is open a window.
Yeah, open the windows, they'd be able to do that.
All right, then, that they have some type of cir- air circulation. Anything? Any comment on that?
None.
George, any comment?
No.
All right, so can I have a motion that we instruct that David set up some type of a schedule when a office could be open for employees that want to be there on their own volition can enter for a certain period of time. And he can, you know, if Jackie needs X number of hours, maybe he can fill that in with her as she's in EC fit in relation to other offices. Okay?
It's doable.
All right. Okay, we had, I hope you had the town administrator's report. David talked about the budget.
The only other thing, the only other thing I have, and I don't know, did it end up on the agenda or not, was for Profile Rock?
Yeah, I I was gonna have that as the last one I had written in. Well, we'll come back to that. What was that, Tim? I didn't hear.
I said that was on there as an amendment.
Right.
Oh, all right, okay.
Um, all right, police station update. Is there anything you want to say to that, Lisa?
No, I I'll save that for our next meeting.
Okay. The last item that I have under the selectmen is the issue of Profile Rock. I believe everyone got a email in relation to this. Anyone have any need for any?
I I did speak to Carlton regarding this. And it's really, you know, to best of my understanding, it's really not a town issue. It's the the policing of the what is that, the the state park or?
I I would agree, I would agree. There it isn't the the enforcement issue isn't a town thing. It's it's controlled, operated and controlled by DCR. The enforcement agents are the environmental police. The problem is, is that the parking area where they use, they want to close, DCR wants to close it down. The parking area is in the public way. And they have no authority to close off a public way. So what they're doing is they're asking that the Board of Selectmen close off that that parking area as a public way temporarily until the park reopens. That's what the vote needs to be. They'll take care of the enforcement. We're gonna put up a sign. Actually, I I just the other thing I wanted to mention, we we're gonna be putting up like five or six signs in the playgrounds and in different, like the common and things like that. Basically prohibiting people from congregating on those areas until further notice. Basically, you know, trying to keep people social distancing. We don't want like a ton of kids on the playground equipment and that kind of thing. Hathaway, I already had put in, put, not put, had highway tape off all of the playground equipment. We want to make sure that the kids aren't gathering together and and using that, so. And and the concern here is with Profile Rock, it seems to be that there's a lot gathering of people that have been going there, particularly when the weather is nice, and that we want to discourage that at this point.
So can we just put no parking signs there?
All right, George, if I I I'll just explain, I think, what the issue with the environmental police is, is that in front of the roadway in front of Profile Rock, I if you remember this, you have the road where it is now, and then you have to the right as you're going west, another roadway which leads into the driveway. And also further down a little bit where you have the cut through the rock, you have another area that is basically their old parts of the road that the town never gave up. So they they're still town road there, like old Slidbridge Road. Okay, and the environmental police would like us to put some type of a oh, barrier, so to speak, whether it's parking signs or whatever, we decide to make it something that they could enforce to keep people from parking there. That's.
So why can't we do that then?
Because it's a public way. You only the board can close a public way.
So we're the board, right?
Yep, you just need to vote temporarily close that portion of the public way.
Okay, Charlie, that reasonable to you?
Oh, yes. And what if I if I may, I would say also, for the time being, to make it easy to enforce, because I know there will be other issues with parking, is to temporarily ban parking on Slidbridge Road from the railroad crossing to Hathaway Road on both sides of the street for temporary no parking zone. That way we can enforce the whole situation. Because I know from past experiences, people, when they are banned from parking in front of the gates Profile Rock, will try to park up in the area that is close to the historical society. And I think we need to take both of those situations into oh, considerate.
Can I make a motion that that we do that?
You may.
May.
Okay, second?
I'll second it with some discussion. I think you're gonna have to check with the historical society over there, because that's their road. So I would just say you want to just let them know what we're doing.
Well, okay, we can we can give them the information, but Lisa, it's it's a town road. That's the issue. Okay, it's not.
Are you talking about into the historic, like driveway?
No, no, no. The the loop that goes around, there there is a building, the the house that they have acquired that is on that section of road. But the road is town road. And what we're doing is we're we're placing no parking there. Okay, I it's it's a town road. We have this emergency. We want to relieve that emergency. And that's my point.
Okay.
So do we have a second?
I already seconded.
Okay, pardon me, I just wanted to reconfirm. Excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Grunewald?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, yes. All right, the next is an item for the Personnel Board. I'll turn it over to Personnel Chair. Pardon me, yes, pardon me, health, order health first, order health first. Trash, recycling option. Oh, discussion.
I think we're talking about the contract.
Right.
With Republic.
Right.
Right, and.
Derek, is Derek on the?
Yeah, I'm here.
All right, okay. Do you want to give an overview, Derek, of what our discussions have been with Republic?
Sure. I had been asked to go out to find out exactly what the number was gonna be on that fifth year. We had discussions but didn't have anything to write in. So I did get something in writing from Republic. I forwarded that off to everybody. The increase from what we originally thought to what their proposal is was just a little bit over seven thousand, and that was due to prevailing wage. But either way, the number that we got is significantly lower than I think if we went out for bid. So that's pretty much where we're at. Giving that to everyone for discussion and review, and that's it.
And make a motion to accept the contract?
I'll make, I'll certainly be glad to make that motion for you, George, at three hundred and seventy four thousand, one hundred and twenty eight dollars.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Not by me.
What is the issue, Lisa?
We already voted to go out to bid. So we would have to rescind that.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, that being said, I'll make the motion that we rescind our earlier vote to go out to bid on the trash and recycling contract and instead exercise our for fifth year option with Republic at the sum of three hundred and seventy four thousand, one hundred and twenty eight dollars.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. George, Mr. Grunewald?
Aye.
Ms. Pacheco?
No.
Mr. Sullivan, yes. The next item one is pertaining to the Personnel Board. I'll turn it over to you, Lisa.
Um, so I just so hard with this agenda here. Um, I'll entertain a motion to have, what's his name, Tim?
Adam Salinaro.
Adam Salinaro to be part of the police officer. Yeah, I got that part. Thanks.
I'll make that we appoint Alan Salamaro as a reserve police officer effective April sixth, twenty twenty.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Grunewald?
Aye.
And myself, yes.
All right, the last agen- item on the agenda would then be, as was the first, reorganization of the board.
Well. Are we, we, do you want to keep it the same or are we reorganizing?
Well, what is the annual process normally? Like, we we have, if I'm correct, we change every year at election time, which would have been about now.
Would have been today.
The chairmanship, excuse me?
The election would have been held today if the if we.
Today. So it would have rotated to the next person. And I think we should keep up with that process. Even though the election wasn't held, but the year has gone by, so that way we can stay on schedule.
Hey, I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Can we actually clean that up a little bit before we do that? Can you actually nominate, nominate a board of health, nominate a personnel board?
The only thing to keep in mind, George, is that you're gonna have to stay board of health because Charlie's not gonna be able to.
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay.
So how would you like the motion made, Tim?
If it's the the pleasure of the board, maybe to have Selectman become the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Selectman Sullivan to become the chairman of the Personnel Board and to have Selectman Grunewald be chairman of the Board of Health, if that makes sense.
All right, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, once again, Mr. Grunewald?
Aye.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, yes. Um, the hour is seven thirty five. There are two items for executive session. One, the Highway Department has been put off, well, well, both of them have been put off for a while. But I'll entertain any discussion on continuing or not.
Um, one, one point at what are, Tim, do we have to go back and do all those motions again?
I, if you would like to comply with the open meeting law correctly, yes.
Yes, can you do that quickly?
All right. All right, Tim, why don't you read the, why don't you read the motions off and I'll entertain?
All right, so starting with number two, Selectman Pacheco made a motion to approve and sign weekly warrants numbered forty one to forty four for the month of April. That was seconded by Selectman Grunewald.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Grunewald?
Aye.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, yes.
Uh, for the building insurance for the regional school district, the motion was to approve the recommendation of the town administrator. That was made by Selectman Pacheco and seconded by Selectman Grunewald.
Mr. Grunewald?
Aye.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, yes.
Um, let's see, Old Colony, there was no votes taken for the the review of the articles. Scroll down here. It was motion to forward to Town Council, the the draft warrants to Town Council, but removing Articles ten, fifteen, and twenty three from the annual town meeting warrant. That motion was made by Selectman Pacheco and seconded by Selectman Grunewald.
Mr. Grunewald?
Aye.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, yes.
Uh, there was no votes there. Uh, let's see. We have a a motion about the the late fees. I actually have to get that from the recording, but it was a motion made by Selectman Pacheco and seconded by and seconded by Selectman Grunewald.
Alright, um, Mr. Grunewald?
Aye.
Ms., Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, yes.
Uh, Reserve Fund Transfer for Legal Expenses, uh, motion by Selectman Pacheco to approve and move the request forward to the Fin- Finance Committee, so, uh, seconded by Selectman Grunewald.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Sullivan, yes. Next one?
Uh, the next one you did correctly, uh, the, whatever vote you made for the, uh, ratifying, confirming votes for executive session for the open meeting law complaint. Just want to do that real quick.
Okay, uh, pardon me, Tim, I didn't quite hear you, do we have to re- reaffirm that vote?
Uh, yes, you do.
Okay, uh, Mr. Grunewald?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, yes.
And I believe the last one is, uh, motion to approve the minutes of March 25th, 20, uh, March 30th and April 1st. Uh, it was a motion by Selectman's Pacheco and seconded by Selectman Grunewald.
Mr. Grunewald?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, yes.
And the other ones you did correctly, so you're good to go.
Alright, so, uh, do we continue on an executive session or, or not?
No, can we put it on for the next meeting?
George, do you concur with that?
Yes, I do.
Alright, uh, we shall do that.
Meeting is next Monday evening, if that's okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Yes, seconded.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Grunewald?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, yes. Good night.
Aye.
Good night, thank you.
Aye.